Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to Mike and Mike's premier business radio program around. I'm your host, Mike King. I appreciate you being here with me. The views expressed here are mine and have no connection to support or agreement with any other host. Information or ads on the station, I don't work for the station. My program just airs here on a daily basis. So join me in this cutting edge show. We uplift the community and showcase RVA in a different way. The sounds you're listening to are emanating from the Mike King business studio, which is the global epicenter of social enterprise business, otherwise known as ESPN Richmond. So we'd like to thank our show sponsors. Make sure you take care of them. Take a look out for them, you know, listen what they have to say. Cause as always say, the microphone ain't free, plus my grandkids do need stuff. So make sure you can find me on social platforms, under Mike and Mike RVA as well as Mike King Biz. Alrighty, so it's an honor. We have city councilman Andres Addison here with us. Welcome to the program, sir.
Mike, great to be here. Glad you invited me here.
So you're here with with mobile hacks on. You're here with, and we're going to talk about the political side. But we're here, you're an entrepreneur in in the city. This is a business show. Tell us about who you are and what you do, and then we'll dive into the different aspects.
Absolutely. Well, you know, being elected official in Richmond on city council, it's a part time elective job. And so we always have to have outside income to support ourselves and our families and our livelihood. So with that, one of the things we've always had to do is either balance a bunch of different tasks. Other work, either be an independent consultant or other aspects of that capacity. And I lucked into an opportunity during the pandemic. A friend of mine's gym shut down and through the support of other members of that friend circle as well as that gym. We created a new chapter for that, and I was put in charge of creating what now has become Pure Fitness RVA. The newest gym in Scotts Edition, we are, what I would like to say is the best workout in Scotts Edition. Mostly because it's working around the professional lifestyle. And for me, that's been a really good piece because that's what I have been. And I think a lot of people now getting back into the post pandemic world want to see. And so I've been lucky to find this pathway of connecting both my political schedule with a part time job of creating this new gym.
Being a political person and elected official, what was it like starting a business? Was it like you you thought it would be? Or was it, how different was it from the actual, before you're setting policy and doing all those things? Now you're the guy on the ground saying, okay, I need to make this happen.
You know, I think is it what some boxing crate, I don't know if it was Floyd or Mayweather or Mike Tyson, probably Mike Tyson. The best plan and preparation is great until you hit the face.
Yeah, all the plans go out. When you get punched in the face, everything is over. So so you had the idea and exactly how it was going to be as an elected official with the suit on. Okay. And all of a sudden now Andre shows up as a business owner.
Very different, incredibly different. And I'm not saying this in like just of anybody who's I interacted with. But I learned firsthand exactly the frustration a lot of business owners have conveyed over many years to city council. And seeing the process of just creating a business, getting a building permit, navigating the walls of city hall. And I
You walked
The halls that I used to work in and now in part of the the elected body to help support its improvement in policy and budget. And now I'm in there seeing how it works and just, it was frustrating. And I saw firsthand some of the, you know, concerns we had and the people I worked with also gave me some insight on. So it's not this way all the time. And if you go to Henrico, you go to Chesterfield, there's a different process in opening a business. They, and it's just, I feel like a need of addressing and improving. But I made sure that when I went through this process, I didn't wear my city council hat. I was just Andreas Addison, business owner. Here's my application. Here's my, here's my building permit, the same as anybody else would never gave anybody a heads up. And for months I navigated through that bureaucracy frustratingly. And it ended up delaying my business opening and some other aspects, which is what's been common across many entrepreneurs in our city.
One of my, my, my king Addison is Andre Addison is here with us talking about, at this point, we're talking about the starting of a business. So during a pandemic, a business opportunity shows up. Talk to our listeners about what that means. Like, so everyone has an idea. Everyone has a dream. How do you take that and turn that into walking and trying to get a permit?
You know, it's actually a lot. You know, I had to find, of course, a new space. Probably a warehouse space to fit in a gym, because that's usually what a good big box gym would go into. And Scott's Edition has many of those. And so finding one nearby was actually very easy. Getting access through a lease was not difficult. But then in acquiring a place 5,000 square feet at Altamont Moore Street. I all of a sudden realized that the transition of that into the actual gym was going to take plumbing, bathrooms, ADA access, lighting, all the things that would make this space functional by code didn't exist. And so going from idea to actual reality was hiring architects, getting engineers involved, getting this building plans and designs and drawings and going back and forth. And it was a lot of that that work. And for three months I got went from lease to building plan. And then I submitted it in January in 2021. And it was frustrating how nobody seemed to care. There was no like, thank you for submitting your building permit. We look forward to getting this done with you. It was just cool. Drop it in the shared Dropbox folder and we'll get back to you when we can review it.
That was it.
That was it. That was literally the most unceremonial.
Do you think that's a difference between Richmond city and the counties? Because people always talk about it's easier to operate in the counties. One of the things I do say is, and I try and explain to people, if Richmond isn't thriving, I'm not from here. I don't have a dog in the fight. What I do now. It's hard for Henrico and Chesterfield to really be on and thriving if Richmond isn't happening the way it is now.
No, I think that's, that's true. I don't want to say that it's necessarily we're that much worse off. I just feel like we have coddled and piecemealed and band-aided together these processes over many decades. And what you have is it's someone's job to just take the intake of that form and pass it off.
They did their job.
And that's the thing is there's no true, you know, someone's, it's not someone's job to go, I'm so glad you're here. We can't wait to get your business open. Thank you for your time and investment. What answers to questions do you have right now? And I think there's a need of knowing. It should be someone's expectation. Let me get this done as soon as possible and manage the process because that's what they do every day. I'm doing this once. They do this every day. Don't make this be just routine for you because it's not for me. And that experience difference is what's needed.
Alrighty, so Andres Addison, let's see your business owner and the name of the business once again is?
Pure Fitness RVA.
Pure Fitness RV. 10 years ago, 12 years ago, if someone had told you Scott's Edition would be the place. Okay, I came in 2014. There were not many things I knew about Richmond when I got here. But one was I had heard about Joe Morrissey and with some of stuff that happened that he did happen with him. But this wasn't the scam apart. This was something that had to do with a gun and okay, that part. And they were trying to build on a slave burial ground. Okay, because they were like, we gotta get out of Scott's Edition. This place is the worst. Fast forward, all of a sudden, Scott's Edition is hot property. Nonprofits are moving out because they can't afford to be there. And people looked up and said, hey, we kind of lucked into something. What would have been the chance years ago? That Scott's Edition would be that? And what's another area of the city which you say might have that potential? Everyone knows Brooklyn Park, where they got that.
You know, I think one of the issues that Richmond as a city needs to embrace is planning and preparing for economic activity. Meaning when neighborhoods start becoming hot, start seeing transactions and development and investment and businesses opening up and building permits coming through. We should start looking at the fact of, hey, why don't we make this place even better? Let's put some sidewalks in some streets, some street lights. Let's put in some, you know, traffic calming aspect. Let's make it look like a neighborhood. And we always follow it, right? We always see as a city seem to go, it's gotten ahead of us. Now we've got to come back in and fix all these things. And for Scott's Edition, for example, you know, there are misconnected sidewalks all over the place. And my block is one of those. The sidewalk goes to the alley and it stops. And it's one of those things where you're kind of thinking to myself, but there's apartments going on Catty Corner. Why can't these be fixed? Before we start building to create it as a place for interest. And I think what you see is like Brooklyn Park Boulevard is next. It's being bought up. And being, you know, plot projects are being proposed to create that opportunity. And I think when we look at the intentional aspect of growth in cities, Charlotte's doing it with their light rail. You're seeing cities across the country doing it around transit focused transportation development. We need to embrace that. I think the biggest opportunity we have is South Side. I truthfully think if we look south of the river and we look at where we've got some automatically great roads. Hall Street, Lothian Turnpike, Richmond Highway, existing arterial roads. That if we really focused on infrastructure, transit, good neighborhood development around it, planned density, planned bus stops and routes and frequency, we can truly see an amazing transformation happen. We can learn from the neighborhoods of Manchester over the past 20 years, Scott's Edition of the last decade and say, hey, if we did this on purpose, if we actually planned and intended to do this growth, what would be different about it? What would it be? And I think that would change the original problem I dealt with. If you see that this is the plan we're trying to get to as a city. And my goal and my job is making sure that's done as soon as possible. Because that's how we're going to pay for the infrastructure. That's how we're going to pay for the jobs. So we're going to create new housing to address our affordability issue. I need to get that done. I'm helping solve that problem. My job's not just stamping a permit. My job is helping make sure that we're creating this vibrancy and thriving city together.
So as a business owner, how do you, and you're on council, you've been in in politics. How do you set culture for it? Now you have to recruit people to work for you. You have to do all those things. How do you set a culture that that would want people to come and partner up with you?
You know, I think it's having a shared vision. I think, you know, the mayor's one Richmond is a good start. But what does that really look like and mean? Because we've seen that we're not, especially during the pandemic. We saw a lot of the existing divides we have across our city by zip code or neighborhood of just differences in terms of access to resources. And so for me, I think we need to have that shared goal of a vision for what our city can become. Not just being one city connected, but where are we going? Like, what is our future path to be? Because then if you have an ability of saying all of our jobs are aligning to achieve this goal. It's housing, it's jobs, it's workforce development, it's schools. It's all these things connecting together with parks and youth sports and after school activities. We're going to this direction together. It's not just one city. It's here's where we need to have it. And that's the thing I feel like is a good vision is what will achieve that.
All right. One of my ESP in Richmond, that's where you find us. This is part of the Mike King Business Radio Network, which is ESPN Richmond 106.1. Every day from five to seven, the choice gospel 105.3 every day from two to three, as well as international business growth radio. That's where we are. We're done like LeBron and taking our talents global. We're talking about what's happening here in in RVA area. Alrighty, so fitness has always been a part of your life.
Yes.
What were the sports as a kid that that were your sports?
You know, as a kid, you know, I grew up in rural Northwest Virginia and Shendoa County, small, you know, quaint little area. I played soccer, baseball, play some little league basketball too, when we, when I had the chance to get on the court, et cetera. And a lot of sports were outdoors. So I had an outdoor basketball court on a mud gravel lot. And I just couldn't dribble a lot because I didn't have anywhere to dribble. But I would shoot everywhere. And so that was one of the sports I did. But I think through my, my, my childhood, you know, growing up in rural part of the county, I couldn't really get to a lot of the other camps and sports teams and travel teams. And so I ended up in high school, cross country, track and swimming. And that was where I was mostly distanced in those, in that space. Went to Virginia Tech for college. And changed a lot of my, my lifestyle decisions, pathways and habits. And credit a really good, I think, healthy eating cycle, sleep cycle, got into routines of fitness, played basketball, lifted weights, weights, got really energetic and excited. And to me, honestly, what I think was the pinnacle of the fitness part of my life was I was dared by a friend of mine's girlfriend, senior year to try out for the cheerleading team. And I had no gymnastic experience. I had never done anything as a cheerleader. And so I walked on and tried out and I was one of 20 people that walked in that room, one of three that got picked. And from there became from walk on to a JV cheerleader to varsity, to then cheering in Madison Square Gardens at football games. And then ended up being in Daytona Beach for the national cheerleading competition all in one year. And I think that was something that showed me that anything is possible.
Anything is possible when you walk on like that. Yes.
Division one school at college that was with a bunch of scholarship athletes. It was something really humbling, but something I embraced fully.
When you went to Virginia Tech, where were you going there to study?
I wanted to be an architect. They put me in engineering. And then I ended up finding political science and that was I watched during my childhood, the world changed in the nineties, right? You saw the Berlin Wall fall, Soviet Union, the Eastern Bloc countries become their own independent nations. You saw, you know, Madeleine Albright come in and have her passion of her childhood home now becoming part of her aspects too. War and battles happened. Iraq war was a big part of that too. So I saw a lot of global context. And the global stage of the world happened. And that was something that I always paid attention to. But then when I was given a chance to study it, it became like, this is really fun. I enjoy this.
It's sport.
It's sport. It's very much sport.
Okay. So well, before you came, when we talked about so running for office and I always ask political folks when they come. Where do we find the next generation of Andres Addison? Because to run for office is brutal. I mean, it really, it really is. It's not for the faint of heart. It's for somebody you're putting, you're exposing yourself to say, all right, well, here I am. Because I want to make a change. Sir, I'll give the, give the speech on, on why someone should do that, that next generation that who is out there.
You know, I think a lot of times for the people I've talked to, they have a lot of complaints, problems, things they want to see fixed. A lot of them want to run for office, but that barrier between wanting to run and actually committing to it is the, the true meat and bones of it all. Can I afford to do this? Do I have the time for it? The biggest part of it is the family sacrifice.
Yes, because when I, you want to run for office, then you have to go and say, honey, I'm thinking about running for
The real boss.
Exactly. Now you gotta do some explaining because we've seen what that looks like on the campaign trail.
Yeah. And I think that's where, you know, we can't take politics out of politics. It's always going to be there. You're going to, it's a, it's a dogfight. And at the end of the day, you're going to come in and you're going to challenge everything you possibly can. Character, experience, ability, you name it. It's all on the table. And until you can find what's going to actually poke the bear to give you a step ahead, you just keep going. And so the problem we have is that's just, that's just, that's just running for office. That's just trying to get to on the, in the seat. And then when you're in the seat, it's got to be the understanding of what it takes to, you know, stay above it all and not get into the fights. And not get into the sometimes the vitriol and anger. And I think honestly, at the end of the day, it's hard to run for office. It's not easy to be in office. And I think today we got to find a way to support, I think, the resources needed to make sure that our city gets the best leaders that win these campaigns. With the ability and experience to bring resources and ideas to the table and actually can help deliver that. And sometimes it's not necessarily the candidate or the person in the seat. It's staff. It's our resources in our offices. It's the people who can carry the understanding of that's a good idea. Here's how we can do that. It's a policy. It's a budget. It's a staffing thing. And that takes a lot of work to do. And on the campaign trail, you can't do that. That's too wonky and nerdy and in the weeds.
Yeah.
But to get to do what you want to do when you run an office, that transition needs resources and support.
So you were, when you were in the machine, working in city hall.
For eight years.
What was, what was the, what'd you do? Keep looking over there saying, boy, that sure looks attractive.
No, it was more of the fact of being told no to projects I was working on and being like, but this is like, this is what we should be doing as a city. It was, I think my biggest one, I looked at this initiative to help improve access to healthcare for uninsured residents. This is before the Medicaid expansion and, you know, great project, community support, tons of leaders are around the table. And the political machine just said, no, they're like, this seems like too much work. This seems outside of what we do. And I'm going, but I helped you create this community wealth building initiative. And this conversation kept coming up is if I'm not healthy and my statistically in lower income impoverished communities, do you have lower health outcomes? And if that's an issue and a barrier, then we should be looking at that. I, I can do all the job training, job creation, investing in the neighborhoods, but if health is becoming and a consistently constant reminder of what we can't do, then let's focus on that. And everyone looked at me and said, that's not what we do though. And I'm going, but we should, we have to. And it was in that discussion of no to really supported need. I kind of was like, maybe I should be one of the leaders instead.
Okay, sir, that's what I was talking about. And they keep saying, no, you're like, okay. So, all right, so as we wrap up, anything that you'd like to let our listeners know. So let's talk about the business and then how people could find you there and on a political side as well.
You know, I think this, my gym, Pure Fitness RVA is meant to be, you know, it's a small gym. I'm only trying to have about 100 members total. I'm not trying to be, you know, several hundred people. I want it to be your gym space, your third place, right? The place you go to, you schedule around your time for that. Most importantly, we're the best workout in Scott's Edition for a couple of reasons. One, we have air conditioning.
Which is good.
Always important, right?
I'm from Pennsylvania. I'm like, you would say, how is it? I'm trying to get to October.
Right? That's it.
I'm trying to get to October because it is brutal. AC is, is good.
AC is one. Number two, we've got showers. So you can either go back to your day, go back to work or go on your night plans. That's always a big need in gyms. A lot of times gyms like mine don't have those resources. So I've got four showers. And I think honestly, the best part is after we just totally just challenged you through a workout for 50 minutes. I come around with this nice little plastic box with these yellow towels that are chilled and lavender scented. And I walk up to you while you're laying on the floor in the puddle and I give it to you and you just wipe your face and you wipe your sweat off yourself and you just feel immediately better. And so for me, the best part of the workouts is those three characteristics is what makes me the best workout in Scott's.
There you go. On the mic, Mike, that's we do. We find the best and the brightest out there. On the political side, how can people find us in council?
You know, I've got, you can always Google Andres Addison, city council or Andres Addison Richmond. It should be on the top on there. Andreas dot Addison at RVA.gov is my email address. Office number is 804-646-5935. Whitney Brown is my, my boss. She's my chief of staff. She's the one who keeps me on, on my toes and gets everything working in our district online. We've got the first district RVA.com. You can also find us on the city website RVA.gov as well. I'm pretty accessible. I have to have like eight different modes of chat of communication at any point to be available. So another part of the job.
There you go. Andres Addison, thank you for coming in. Also anytime we, anytime you want to come back, the microphone's yours. With news, breaking news, anything else going on. So we'd like to thank you for coming on. On the mic, good Mike. I will talk to you soon. Mike King is here, host of one of my good life, Richmond's premier business radio program, heard as part of Mike King's radio network, which is ESPN Richmond 106.1 daily from five to seven AM, the choice 105.3 every day from two to three PM. As well as international business growth radio that is Saturdays 10 a.m. Eastern. That's where you find us. That's where the game changers come to talk. One of my good Mike, Mike King, this radio is your business radio program. One of my good Mike, Mike King back. We got a friend of the family back with us. So this is part of the Mike King Biz Radio Network, which is ESPN Richmond 106.1, the choice 105.3, as well as international business growth radio. We're here. It's always good when, when you stop through and we see you here mobile station. You know, we're here, we're over at the choice. Alicia is back with us with the art of me. You know how long it took for me to get that name, remember?
Yeah.
That was always, I had a whole bunch of names for you. All right. So tell folks who you are and what you do.
So I am Alicia Randolph and I am the owner, CEO of Art of Me RVA. We are a nonprofit organization here in the Richmond, Virginia area. And we raise awareness through our creativity. So we host events that are creative, that will bring awareness and get our community speaking about mental health.
Alrighty, and you had something big that's happening, correct?
Yes, I do. I have a, I host an annual mental health awareness.
We're, we're year three.
Yes, no, we're, we're year four.
This is year four.
This is year four.
I gotta put some respect on that. And you have a massive team to make this happen.
I do, I do, I do. I have a lot of support, great people, Danny Green, Reverend Marvin Green, Eric Tipton, Mike, you're the best. You're
But now this is your dream and your baby. And you know, whenever somebody's trying to do something big, there's always challenges. There's always those things. Give us an idea of when the event is and let's hear about it. And then we're going to talk about some of the things that you need out there.
Okay, the event is September 17th, which is a Saturday. It's from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. At the Henrico Recreation Center. So the Eastern Henrico Recreation Center.
Alrighty, and what's going to happen there? So you've had in the past.
Yeah.
How's it grown in the past? Like when you first started it, what was the hardest part? And now what you've learned over the course of years doing it?
So the hardest part is still the hardest part, really, is just getting the community aware, letting everyone know who we are and just having people to trust us to know that, you know, we're a safe organization and it's okay to come out and support us and get that initiative going.
Alrighty, Lisa's here with this part of me. How can people find you out there?
So I have Instagram. It's Art of Me RVA. I also have Facebook. You guys can email me at artofmerva@gmail.com. So yeah.
So mental health is your thing.
Yes.
Mental health is your thing. And we've talked during the pandemic, after the pandemic, I always ask you, how are people doing out there?
In my opinion, I don't think it's better, you know, you know, the last time I was on the show, we spoke about how people were doing during the pandemic. But I kind of feel like we're still the same or if not worse off, honestly now.
So now before you say you have kids and we talked about how that impacted them, you know, not going to school now, they're back at school. What do you see a different, do you see a difference in them now as opposed to before the pandemic?
I do. My kids are more homebodies. I feel like, you know, whereas before they used to go outside. It was a, you know, they look forward to doing that. And I feel like they're kind of content. They've gotten used to being in the home and on the video games. So that's what they do.
That is true.
Yeah.
I mean, we've all sort of gotten, we got sent home and kind of got used to being home.
Yeah.
And then when you go out, it's like, okay, I know I gotta go out and do those things.
But I don't want to.
But I don't want to. Alrighty, so I'll always talk about changing the world is not cheap, easy or free.
No.
Alrighty, so what are some of the things that the art of me is in need of?
So we are in big need of sponsors, sponsors and support, especially for this rally. I do the rally on my own. I usually don't have any type of funding for the, for the event. So it gets kind of hard trying to pull it off without the funding. So that's the biggest part. And then just getting the support. I don't have a team, a big, a big, big team. It's really me and maybe a few other people that can pull their time together to assist me. So just having that, that support of people that are going to be there, you know, for the long haul, not just for the moment. But people that I actually can depend on to continue the journey.
Alrighty, on the mic, good Mike, how can people find you out there again?
Art of Me RVA. You can Google me. You can Instagram me, Facebook me, artofmerva@gmail.com. You can email me.
Alright, and let's talk about some of the plans that you have for the organization. You want to take it bigger and better. Because you understand the need for mental health.
Yes, yes, sir. So again, you know, my mental health journey, it started as a teenager in high school. I was pregnant as a teenager and I attempted to commit suicide at the time. But I've always been heavily into the arts. So my bigger initiative for art of me is to get a community hub space where the community can know where the resources are. And to actually kind of bridge that gap between resource and community. I feel that there is a gap and there is a need because a lot of the community, they don't know where to go. You know, we want the help and I know because I have friends, I see it all the time on social media. People are reaching out. They're wanting to get the help, but they're not knowing where to get the help or how to get the help.
Is it better now than it was years ago, do you think?
I don't think so. No, I, I honestly feel that it's the same, but people are, are speaking up about it more.
Ready. So what would you, so a parent, say you're a parent and you see your child struggling. What do you do?
My advice, I actually have a child who has struggled, actually both of my, my sons. All of my children are in therapy, just to say that. But you talk to your kids, you, you try to get it out of them. If they don't want to talk to you, then you go and you find someone that you can trust and that your child can trust as well to speak to. That is my biggest advice. I brought a journal, a notebook for my oldest son. And I tell him like, if you're not ready to talk to me about it, write it in here, please. Just don't keep it inside. And that is my biggest advice.
When you, so you have two boys.
And a girl.
Alrighty, so as guys, even from a young age, man up, pull yourself up by the bootstraps. How you doing? And we're like, we're fine. While the wheels are coming off.
Yeah. And you know what? I actually dealt with my oldest son with that this morning. He's beating himself up. My oldest son is a football player. And one of the children on the team broke his arm at practice a couple of days ago, and my son felt responsible for it. So he is like beating himself up about it bad. And I could see it all over him. So I had to call him, call him to me this call him to me this morning, like, hey, let me, let me talk to you. I need you to sit down. And I just had to let him know, like, look, I'm here for you. I got your back. Nobody else has your back. Your mama got your back. You know what I'm saying? So if you have anything that you need to come and discuss with me, please just tell me. I can see it all on your face already, so I know you're not okay. Yeah, mama knows. So I know you're not okay. But when you're ready, I'm not gonna force you and I'm not gonna push it out you. When you're ready, you come to me and you talk about it. But I also reassured him by letting him know it's not your fault.
Were you a journaler?
I'm 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 not, but I am. So a lot of my things I kind of keep inside as well. Um, I but I'm I'm one of that.
Where you got it from?
Yeah, so that's how I know how to address it though. That's exactly how I know how to address it. So I have to tell him to write down because for me, I'll have it in my head and I'll think about it, but I never write it down.
You never do.
But I am a, I I write music, so I sing, um, I dance, I paint, I do everything in the arts. So I am a writer, so to speak, yes.
Do you, and when you, when you completed an a piece or whether it's music or whatever, do you go back and evaluate it to look at that and and wonder? When it's done, it's not done?
No, no, I'm a huge perfectionist. So even when it's done, it's never done. To me, it's always something that I can nitpick and fix and do better. I'm always trying to do better.
Alrighty, on the mic, Mike, Lisa's here with this. Uh, how can people find you one last time?
Art of Me RVA. I have Instagram and Facebook, or you can artofmerva@gmail dot com.
When Mike, Mike will be back. Thanks, don't take care.